Stand for the place, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Welcome to the Porter County Board of Commissioners Tuesday, August 6, 2024, meeting. As you can tell, we're having some AV problems up here, so if we have said something you didn't catch, just pull up your hand and say it again, so we'll try to talk as loud as we can. We'll start with the consent agenda.
Approval of payroll July 19 and August 2, 2024. Approval of claims July 18, July 25, August 1, 2024. Approval of minutes July 16, 2024. Memorial Opera House Artistic Services Agreement. Molly Orrs 800, Stephen Cook 500, Megan James 1,000. Laura Carden 800, Carrie Miller 600, Hannah Lassie 350, Sharon Shepherd 150, Stacy Davis 600.
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, sign. Motion approved. We have, under announcements, we have the fee per vehicle for the admin parking garage on the day of the Popcorn Festival. Have you taken this?
Well, I think it should actually, should raise it. We haven't raised it in a really long time. We have to staff it, and staffing costs have gone up for that. So I think because it's close in parking to the Popcorn Festival and it's covered parking, that it warrants an increase. We have been charging $10.
What would you like to increase?
Well, under normal circumstances, we would say 15, but I think from just a change-making thing, $20 is a lot easier than having to make change. And I just know that from collecting money at Rotary, that $20 is a lot more efficient.
Why is doubling it?
I think we should not go to 20.
What's your recommendation?
Well, she's right, cost has gone up, and we do need to do some maintenance on the garage, so I would be okay with 15.
You good with 15?
I'm good with 15.
Let's make motion.
Okay, I move that we encourage $15 for parking during the Popcorn Festival.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing, sign. Motion approved. Accepting applications for appointment to replace and complete the remaining term of Kay Evans-Ball, as she has resigned from the Convention, Recreation and Visitors Commission. All applicants will be due August 22 by 4:30 PM.
And we will be making the appointment at our August 27 meeting.
Health First Initiative update. Morning, ladies.
Good morning. How are you?
Good, I'm Melvin.
Well.
It's better than bad, isn't it, Carrie?
That's right. Thank you, Carrie. Thank you guys so much for having us today. What you have in front of you are updates and some data, as we're getting it, for all of our programs.
Carrie, let me ask you a question. Would it be a big deal if we asked to stand so?
Yeah.
Because your voice will just, and they're not going to hear what you're saying.
Yes. So what I had presented was an update with some data, as we're getting it, for all of the programs that we have started and are working with partners to put in place in Porter County for Health First Indiana. So this front page, those are a lot of our, I'm sorry, Melanie, in-house programs. So these are things that we in the Health Department are existing to offer throughout the community in different locations. So that is during our needs assessment, we identified that diapers and baby wipes were in need throughout the county, and so we're providing those both in-house and to local pantry. Sanitary napkins, the same. And then during the summer, backpack snatch for weekend meals for kiddos that are part of the summer feeding program. So those are just the numbers on those, and these are all just things as needed that are purchased and taken care of. Also, we talked a lot about harm reduction, and in the end, we purchased supplies and put together this harm reduction kit. So we have put out notifications of that, and began distributing them to locations who are interested in having them and distributing them. So as you can see, some of those have come on board at different times. And for most of these, our data is due from July on August the 10th. So as you see, we don't have a lot of July data, but as I was putting this together and I was receiving July data, I did go ahead and throw it in.
Can I ask, NA stamps were not applicable or not available?
So this is something that I stole from Chris's. So she put NA in some cases when the program hadn't started in that location, but it's not consistent throughout. So under this harm reduction kit, where the NA is, that means that those locations were signed on, but they were not, they did not have them due. So that's why we don't have the due numbers. In our office, we also have a small food pantry and hygiene pantry, and that's just, we just advertise in clinic rooms if people need help in between getting by. Then they are free to ask, and it shows there at the top how many families we've served. And then the same with sharps disposal, which we offer at our office, safe medication disposal. We've collected 87 containers of sharps since the beginning of the year and 160 medications for safe disposal. And I do believe we're in the only locations that take those items in Porter County, so that's kind of taking them in and disposing of them safely and correctly. We do have an employee who's trained as a car seat safety technician, and then that's just information about number of car seats we've been able to give to families in need and also inspections and installations that she's done. We do partner with Newton County. As a part of Safe Kids, there's an opportunity to apply through the state and get car seats for distribution, and that, when she became a technician and got us registered, was unavailable for the rest of the year, but Newton County had some extra, and so we're able to get car seats from them in that degree. Same thing, this is just a little bit about Carrie's care coordination. And just a note on this, we're in the process right now of creating a RAP card for her that we get out to all providers. So right now, what she's receiving are walk-ins, phone calls, via word of mouth. And then, of course, she's out of all of our partner meetings, doing all those kinds of things. This is just kind of capturing context that she's made in referrals that have come from that, and then some of the topics that those fall underneath. And I will say that we are working on, for all of these programs, an information gathering system that will have an outward-based dashboard. So once we have that, we'll let you know, and then anybody can see this data, you know, real fast, so. So then on the next meeting, you see programs that we've put in place with partner organizations. Now, you see a lot of blanks at the bottom. Those are programs that have either, we don't have an executed agreement yet, or they have just started in June, and so we'll start to see the information coming in for those. So for example, the Porter Y M C A has three programs that are going on, and I put out there to the side, like 16-week programs. That first one, Enhanced Fitness, so they started a class in April, and then they started another one in June, and they always take a roll, but then they have to get a full class to start, and so that's where we're at with that. For the Diabetes Prevention Program, that is a year class, and so when they get to the minimum, they start. So they started one class, and they're getting ready to start another one, and they've kind of kicked them off one at a time. So now we're rolling to where they're advertising for the blood pressure self-monitoring. You can see that first responder, Miss Health Support, then Doc Shelby, and some of his activities since April. And then we are very excited to start with Purdue Extension, starting in July. And I believe she's advertising about those programs, that she has two matters of balance that she's getting ready to start, and they just have to do some training for that. With Power's Health, the Reducing Undiagnosed Diabetes in Porter County Program. Jen has been very active with that in July. That just started on July the 1st, so we'll have some great numbers from that next month. And then, of course, Northwest Health Training Services Agreement. This is something that we have an agreement, and we have an order form, and we're ready to get going. We're just waiting on a couple of amendments, and so that will allow us, for those who qualify for screening, so it's not for diagnosed visits for screening, it's qualification for screening, but can't afford to have them, we can refer them and send them to what the health have at. We also have a partnership with the Porter County Council on Aging and Community Services, and that kicked off in the middle of June. They've been able to hire two additional drivers. They do have another bus that's in the shop unless it's just recently gotten out, so we should see a lot of increases in rights they can offer from that, and we're excited. And then just on the back page, we've had several meetings lately, just kind of to, maybe the term "level set" about Health First Indiana, and let partners know what it is, what the core services are, what we're looking at as far as key performance indicators, and prepare for some future proposals. So those include juvenile detention center, some of the Porter County halfway houses, and also Northwest Health regarding overdose prevention, which is something we, Carrie's this on the sofa, and something that we're kind of looking into as far as gathering data on those non-fatal overdoses, so that we can, we can see where our prevention efforts really target those. We've had a lot of additional outreach that has started. They have a monthly standing agreement with recreation to be there with the Hilltop Mobile while they're out in the summer. We went up to the Dunes State Park right by the Pavilion and did some sun, water, summer food safety. We have a microscope, we took some ticks and some mosquitoes that people could see different kinds of vectors, and we could talk about protecting yourself from them, and also the tick dashboard, and just kind of raise a lot of awareness about a lot of public health education. And we are in the process of hiring our school liaison, and we hope to hire the week of the 12th. We'll keep you updated about that. One of our employees, Lassley, was certified as a peer support counselor, and so more information to come on how we'll be utilizing him.
What is peer support counselor?
So that would be, his degree actually is in addiction counseling. And so you get a certification through S S A to be a peer support counselor, so it's not, he's not a licensed clinical counselor or social worker in any way, but it would be someone who's able to kind of come along, provide somebody to provide support. So like in between, if somebody has, like say that they are getting into counseling with a clinical counselor, but they have a long wait time. This would be somebody that could provide some peer support and come along, even while individuals are in counseling, just to be that support.
Any other questions?
So.
Thank you. Carrie, I was wondering if you could do the board of favors. Next time, or by our next meeting, is to prepare a list or a breakdown of the new monies that we, that have come into county government this last year, and where we've spent those money, what up to this point.
Yep, absolutely.
So we can keep a handle on.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And we actually have a meeting to do just that with IDOH as well, just to kind of have all of that too, and so that will be ready, and we'll.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What's that, health insurance discussion? Scott?
This is the continuing discussion on the plan management, on whether or not, and what plans the county will continue to offer. We have started in years past, and the high deductible plan is the only plan available to new employees, so we have a fair amount of individuals, probably around 200?
60% of the staff are on the agency's plan currently.
So we leave 40% still on the PPO or the traditional plan. There is some, we have looked, and we look, the impetus behind the first reasoning to have new employees enter the system to the high deductible plan as opposed to the traditional plan was born out of the cost savings that the committee was able to kind of mine out of the data between the two plans. And to be clear in this conversation, we have employees who are on the plan, and that is a number that's somewhere low 500s, okay? Then we have a separate number, and that's the amount of people actually on the plan. The reason why they're different is that an employee's family is on the plan. So there's so many lives covered by the insurance plan, and then there's so many employees covered by the plan. So robustly 40% of our plan is still, of our participants are still in the traditional plan. The cost difference that the committee was able to work through the data was about $4,400 per employee on the, excuse me, on the traditional plan as opposed to the high deductible plan. So there is a significant cost savings for the county. The plan has been set up over several years with the idea that we might get here, okay, due to costs, due to the changing environment of health insurance, which is why we have continually added, up till now, things that would make the high deductible plan more powerful. That is why we have the clinic, and that's why the clinic exists, that contract exists. Employees are able to go there free. There's 150 of our most-used drugs on the plan are free there at the clinic, as is the cost savings of the plan, because they're not within the claims, whether those are prescriptions or whatever procedures are happening. It also keeps people from having to go to the emergency room. We've also added that those employees that have chose to be on the high deductible plan get a contribution from the county towards their HSA. So the county takes county money and puts it into their HSA. That HSA is good, doesn't expire at the end of the year, it continues on. It's probably the easiest shorthand, or to think about it, is it's more like a 401K for medical care, because that's basically how it grows and stays and transfers with the employee as their career, as their work history changes. So the county has added that.
We're adding $800 per individual, $1,200 for a family, but the employees also can make their own pre-tax contributions to their HSA account. So let's say you get contacts on a regular basis. You can put pre-tax dollars in and then use those dollars to pay for over-the-counter things, and normally, you would just have to pay for those with after-tax dollars. So there really is a benefit to using the HSA.
So the HSA has some built-in factors that are good for employees, whatever money they're putting in, does go in pre-tax, and then the county's adding to that. But ultimately, we are, I think overall, if we look at the history of how the health insurance plan has been running, I think it's been running very well. I think there's a delineate, there's a distinction between how well a plan is doing and whether it's cost-effective, and whether or not there's a, on the separate side, on the budgeting side, whether or not we have the available funds for it, okay? I think Barb has participated since she's been commissioner in all these meetings. I mean, we pretty much added every trick that is out there, not trick, but device or program that we've implemented this last year. We implemented the care.
Coordinator.
The care coordination. Again, we're not hoping, we've been not, we were not believing that was going to be some magic wand as to the overall cost of the health care, but it was there as a device to help us slow down the rate of growth that we will see year after year, and to try to flatten that out as much as possible. That leads us all to this year's budget cycle and today's issue of, last year, we made, this board made the strong inclination that it was potential this year that the high deductible plan would be the only plan that would be an option to the employees. And so here we are now, all of those things have occurred, and the decision and the discussion is here now to have on whether or not, starting 2025, will the county be offering PPO and the high deductible? Or will the county only be offering the high deductible? The underlying logic, from the county's perspective on cost savings, is the potential for about $4,000 to $4,500 per employee that would then become part of the high deductible plan. There's obviously the concerns for the employees. One last thing I will add, as I talk about the concerns of the employees, obviously, any, any, any change is difficult. There's a lot to learn when you're dealing with health care. It continues to change. There's also the thing that neither, that none of us have talked about yet, is the difference in the cost to the employee. There is a significant difference on the monthly cost that employees are experiencing now, whether they are on a family plan or a single plan, the high deductible plan, or the traditional plan. So those have been priced differently, and those are costing, the traditional plan is costing significant more now per month for employees than the high deductible plan. So ultimately, it ends up with the executive's decision on what we're going to be offering to the employees for health insurance as we move into 2025.
Well, just a couple of things. Eric, and I asked Eric if he could just explain APTA cash real quick, because that was another new benefit that we brought on the plan. Could you just, you had a great explanation, and like do something.
Yeah, absolutely. The way APTA cash works, it just.
You say it really loud.
Absolutely. Can we stand up?
Yes.
All right. All right. So the way APTA cash works, potentially a single case agreement with the business. So if someone's having a knee replacement, they get connected with APTA cash, and they do a single contract for that. The whole purpose of doing it is to break down the cost to the employee and to plan.
The other thing that we've all worked on together is terms of determining the cost to the employee and the contribution to the HSA, is we were trying to equalize, so if they were to go to the high deductible plan, that not only would they not be paying the monthly premiums that they would with the traditional plan, but we would also be hoping to offset a good portion of that with the HSA contributions. And I don't know if either of you have anything that you want to say about that.
Yeah, I, there's two ultimate goals of the strategic plan. It's, number one, is cost containment, but number two is to enhance employee outcomes and quality of life. And so we've really built it to help them navigate the crazy maze of health care. So Scott, you mentioned the clinics. Again, everything that they go to for the clinic is free. APTA also has care coordinators. It's a concierge service where the employees can call in for help navigating to facilities for procedures that have the best outcomes for the best value and the lowest admittance rate. The APTA cash program covers not only elective surgeries, but also high-cost imaging, so for those that need MRIs, PET scans, things of that nature, CT scans. They negotiate cash pay discounts, the plan pays 100% where they're able to. So the POCO Wellness Program was also launched to help encourage healthier lifestyles and reward those. Employees can earn additional HSA contributions through that program. And then Barb, you mentioned the seed money. So every employee enrolled in the HSA as an individual automatically gets $800. Families get $1,200 from the county to help pay for out-of-pocket expenses for services that maybe aren't available at the clinic. And then additionally, we have American Fidelity. They offer one-on-one benefit counselors. So during open enrollment and every new hire throughout the year, those benefit counselors are meeting one-on-one with employees to educate them on the HSA plan, the value of contributing to that. And so there's really a number of features that help them to navigate everything. Additionally, a member today in the HSA plan pays about $100 less in premium than a member in the co-pay plan. So me as an individual, I'm keeping $1,200 more of my paycheck annually, which I could choose to contribute to my HSA, or I could put into my own savings throughout the year.
And the other thing too, in the last enrollment period, we were also working hard to educate people that the traditional plan could be, starting to be phased out, and so they were really focusing on educating them about the HSA and the benefits of being in the HSA.
What is the participation rate in the clinics?
I don't have it in front of me. So that's something that I can get to. It's something that has been a priority for us, is to educate people and help them to navigate there, because it is of no cost to them. So we've seen, since 2020, we had 27% enrollment in the HSA plan. That's up to 60% today.
Yeah, I would like to see those figures, because I know that historically, we've struggled getting employees to take advantage of those programs. So what I'm hearing is correct, this is a, this is just, this is a case of trying to bring down the overall cost of the insurance program, is what it is.
Is Rhonda here? Wait, I have a question about her.
She's here. Her staff.
Our staff.
Oh.
I think that Rhonda has been involved in these conversations, at least throughout the time that I've been involved in these meetings. So I think she's well aware of the conversation. I don't know specifically what, she hasn't expressed anything. I have a couple of questions, or more internal.
So, and could you provide to the commissioners before our next meeting the total number that we had insured over a five-year period? You know, like in a graph, and we can see if the number going up, going down.
I can't see the exact numbers. Off the top of my head, it's held relatively steady, around 560 employees enrolled and less than eight spouses or dependents. Count as of last month's report, it's 572 employees enrolled in the plant, so a handful of growth. 231 of those are enrolled in the co-pay plan, and the other, the remainder are currently enrolled in the agency.
What is the remainder?
So 567 minus 231, so 40.
Oh, we're, you know, we've got hundreds more than that insured through their dependents. What is the total number of people we insure?
Total blackened.
Do we have that?
Not currently. It's around 937.
Yeah, we're going to need that figure and, and the total number of we've, going back five years to today, so we get a handful of it. I mean, I don't think it's any secret, if you talk to members of our county council, and Scott just touched on it a second. It's not that we have a bad program, it's not that, it's just healthcare costs have gone up for everybody, and it's, and it's really, there's little that we can do to stop it. And, but we're government, we're not General Motors, in that we, we can only do what we can afford to do. And we, we of course want to offer that benefit to our employees, and have a strong, you know, insurance benefit program. But at the end of the day, it's what we can afford to do, right? I mean, so.
Well, historically, we've had good benefits because we don't have a salary. Looking at a quick math, I mean, we're saving, if we do it this way, we're saving close to $1 million, so it's absolutely worth the discussion. But what are, what are reasons that you're hearing why people aren't switching over?
They can't afford the high deductible at once. Usually, the people that are on the PPO, they are the ones with the most medical problems, so they want to do the 80/20, because it's hard for them to come up with the $3,500 or $3,800, you know, for the deductible.
That comes at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, so every day they pay, I mean, if they reach the high deductible, it's free, but after that, it pays 100%. But you have to get there with the high deductible, so they like doing the 80/20. It's easier on their budget. I've heard some complaints about men and wives have to have the same, you know, because our rules are if you're offered insurance, you have to, your spouse has to take it. And so I do hear complaints about if they get rid of the PPO, then they have to be on the same health plan by federal law. So one can't.
Yeah, how does.
One can't have the high deductible.
Let me take that. It's not the same, it is the same plan, but it's, you can't, husband and wife cannot be on.
One PPO and one high deductible.
A PPO and a high deductible.
Correct.
They both have to be on a high deductible. Or one can be on a high deductible and one can be on a traditional, but then the high deductible person can't use the HSA to pay for the other person's medical. So when we have the unique circumstance where we have people working here with a married situation, and both have options to have health insurance, ours requires spouses to take that health insurance, and if that other employer doesn't also either have a traditional plan to match with or the high deductible plan to match with, then those people may need to still be, remain insured separately. That's the complaint.
And they don't like that, because family members, you know, you have your, the mom will take the child, or the dad will take the child, they're just separate, and not that you're dealing with it twice, nobody likes the old insurance.
What a mess.
So can I just ask you about the trends in the industry? So can I just ask you about the trends in the industry with regard to the high deductible versus the traditional?
Yeah, I mean, the trend we see is more people are going towards the HSA, both from a cost effectiveness perspective, but then also because.
Exactly, high deductible.
Yes, the high deductible health savings account compatible plan. It is a cost savings vehicle. It encourages people to be educated consumers of healthcare. That was the reason behind implementing the care coordinators to kind of help people to navigate those situations and help provide them with, you know, contracted facilities where they could get lower cost procedures and admitting as well. The spouse will carve out where it's required for the spouse to take their own employer's plan, has been in the market for a significant number of years. We even see the mills and the unions because, to your point, Jim, the cost of healthcare has gone up significantly. If you look over the past 10, 20 years, you know, what can you do? So those are some strategies for the health plan.
And just in general, can you talk about the performance of our plan?
Yeah, the performance of the plan is very well. It's stabilized over time. The, you know, the idea behind the strategic plan is to optimize the program for cost savings, but to do it in a manner that doesn't take benefits away from the employees. We've actually enhanced the benefits that they have access to while maintaining our costs and making sure that things don't go without control.
And you mentioned this, and I just wondered if you could amplify it on a bit, on a little bit, but the idea of being able to be a better consumer of medical care. Traditionally, people, they could care less what something cost, right? They had insurance and they just went, and whatever it was, it was. And now with the care coordination and everything else, we're allowing our employees to be better consumers, better shoppers, to find the best value they possibly can.
Yeah, I think of it as, you know, how do you buy a TV or how do you buy a car, right? You go online, you search the website, you compare prices, you look at reviews, but how do you buy an MRI? You go to the one your doctor sends you to, but maybe he's affiliated with that hospital and maybe that hospital, the MRI costs five times what it costs at a pre standing affiliated down the street. Historically, there's not been a ton of transparency in healthcare. There's legislation downstate and federally, there's consolidated appropriations act that is now requiring more transparency in healthcare. But for us as consumers, we've not had that ability historically. So we've built a program that helps guide its employees through the highest value doors where they can get the best care, you know, for the best value. And really, everybody wins. It lowers readmittance rates, it lowers recovery times. We want to get it right the first time and we want to make sure that people have, you know, unimpeded access to the care they need. And so that's the way that we built the program.
And if you could just give an example of somebody needing surgery and using APTA Cash and the amount of money that would actually save them.
Yeah.
By the fact that, by virtue of the fact that we've added APTA Cash, and what dollar amount might that be for an individual?
So when you look at surgical procedures, national average, a cost of say, knee replacement is 300% of Medicare. Here in northwest Indiana specifically, we have one of the highest healthcare climates in the United States. Some of our hospitals charge 1,000% of Medicare for these procedures. What APTA Cash does is it allows the navigator, who's medically qualified, they're nurses, they reach out to the facility, they negotiate a single case agreement, as Eric said, their average is about 150% of Medicare. So instead of running that through the traditional insurance plan and paying somewhere between 300% to 1,000% of Medicare for knee replacement, a single case agreement is written with the facility and we pay 150 to 200% of Medicare. The employee still gets that surgical procedure, the most that they would pay out of pocket is $1,600 and the plan pays the rest because of significant savings. And the only reason we can't cover 100% for the member is because, well, the IRS requires the HSA plan member to pay at least $1,600.
And I know, and you need to let me know if you've already covered this, I think eventually the PTO is going to save itself out if you do offer it because we, all the new hires, they don't get that option. We just grandfathered in. The older employees can do it still. So I think eventually it's going to save this way out anyway. Again, if you guys, you know, decide to have both choices.
And what was the dollar figure on the savings, Scott, if we were to do away with?
It's about 4,000 to 4,500 per employee and that is about how many employees?
So 231 employees moved off of the co-pay plan at an approximate savings of $4,000 per member is $924,000 in savings to the plan and $1,200 annually in savings directly to that member by way of premium. Now, in all fairness, the county would give an HSA contribution to those individuals. So at an average contribution of $1,000, they would see 231,000 in the HSA accounts for a total net savings of 693,000.
Is there, are there any numbers on what differences out of pocket for employees on average annually between the two plans?
We can run some analysis for you. I don't have it directly in front of me. What I can say is the HSA plan has a minimum deductible as required by the IRS, 3,200 this year, it'll be 3,300 next year, of which the county sees between $800 and $1,200, of which the $1,200 the employee saves could be put in there. So covering roughly $2,000 of that deductible without any additional funds being out of their pocket.
And I think in fairness, when you look at the effect on the employee, it depends on the timeframe you look at. If you look at the first three months, there isn't vast difference between these two options, depending on where you're at with your HSA, okay? But when you expand that timeline, you get to a full year, I have not seen a scenario in which an employee isn't better off on the HSA when you expand it past three months. You get to six months, you get to a year, whether or not that employee is healthy and never going to the doctor, or the employee or somebody in their family is unfortunately ill and has a lot of medical treatment, the longer the scope, I still believe the HSA is the better option for the employee. Now, that is not saying, because it's just, what HR pointed out is true. You start off, it's that first year, that first, go into a family plan on an HSA, you're going to be $3,300 deductible, right? The county is going to give you $1,200 over that year. I believe we're now doing that monthly or quarterly?
It's monthly now instead of quarterly.
Or it's per pay now. So that is coming, but it's not one lump sum, okay? Doesn't come all at the beginning, all right? And as they save their $1,200, that's not all at the beginning either, okay? So they end up, if they, you know, if they have a circumstance where that hits early, it is more painful. But again, once you scope out, because once you have the $3,300 deductible, it's zero after that. So yes, that family's exposed to the $3,300 deductible year one. We can point out, they're going to save $1,200 a year that's coming out of their paycheck right now to pay for the more expensive plan. That could be diverted into their HSA tax-free. We're going to add a $1,200, or we've already added a $1,200 HSA co-pay, that will get them to 2,400. They're getting close. But again, it depends on the slice you're looking at. The longer the term, it is better and will be better. For a handful of people, it will be disturbing that first quarter, six months of the year. We just can't sugarcoat it any other way. That's the reality of the change, along with the potential cost savings. So it's not easy, but that really is all sides of the argument, I believe.
And I also think that it's really incumbent on us to provide the best education we can for the employees as they're transitioning over to the high deductible plan, so that they do understand all of their options.
Well, I also, the reason why this, this cost savings has been a known or a closely known factor for a couple of years now. The reason why it hasn't been implemented to date is because we were still putting together the parts and pieces to make the high deductible plan as the best we could make to deal with it for the employees. We all know about the clinic, but that was the first part. It was, there's been things with prescriptions, there's been things with, the HSA contribution was not there originally when the high deductible started, the care coordination and things like that weren't available. We are not just at the ledge because, you know, there's never a year or a budget cycle where we don't need to try to save money. We are naturally here in the plan. We feel like the committee's got all the parts and pieces put together so that there's as soft a landing as possible for those employees that have not transitioned yet to the high deductible plan. This isn't born out of, there's a gun to our head and if we don't do it, it's not that we're not ready. This has been part of the plan for quite a while, which is why it was talked about last year this time, that this might be where we're at, depending on how things went. So again, I don't want everybody to feel like we got to July of 2024 and, oh no, we need to do something. That has been part of a plan, that all the bricks and foundation has been put in so that when we got here, it was as good as it could be for the employees with as little disturbance to their healthcare.
Both people are getting hit so hard at the beginning, maybe we should say, give them heads up, this is going to change, give them a year to save money so they don't get buried in the first three months of the year. I mean, our people don't make tons of money and that's going to hit some people pretty hard, but it's also impossible to ignore 900,000 dollars of savings.
Can you hold off doing this for?
Just tell them, you got one more year and then, so they can get a chance to build up their coffers a little.
I mean, it's the old employees that are on the obit of the PTO because the new employees can't. So what we're hearing from the people that have been here for years and now we're taking it away.
Well, what's your, what's your pleasure?
Another thought would be, depending on how everyone's leaning, is that we could have a discussion about if the change was made, potentially accelerating the HSA payments on a little different schedule to try to help out with that crush at the beginning. But we'd have to have a discussion about that, which hasn't fully been taken care of with the auditor. So it really is just an idea at the meeting, but that's one possible way to deal with if the change is made.
Well, I'd like to table the discussion until our next meeting and so that any other questions that might be coming up, that we can get those addressed. And can we, would that be okay if we talked about this again at our next meeting?
That's what you'd like to do. I mean, there's, as you can tell, there's a lot of, there's some information we still need. I mean, if we're going to make a big decision like this, and it's a big decision to those people who are losing it, we have to make a strong case for it. And just to say that insurance cost has gone up and we're trying to save money here is, you know, I think we need to be a little bit more clear than just that. And if there are some alternatives here that we can, we can make that, that transition, that landing on that transition with softer, I don't know if there is, but maybe, maybe there is. If there isn't, at least we can come back and say, look, we looked into it and there's nothing else that we can do. So, but like Scott said, I think we were, for the last couple of years, we've been leading up to this anyway. So yeah, I think it's smart to table it and gather that information, come back and attack it again.
I have one more question for Rhonda. You know, are there certain departments where people are more reluctant to put you over that maybe we spent some more time in those departments of education?
It is, and I can't get them to come. I mean, they've been so good, they've been going to different departments and people don't show up and they don't get educated. They, and they don't even let them into open enrollment. They say, I'm keeping what I had, I don't want to go. They don't even want them listening to what it offers.
We talked about doing a benefit fair again this year, so we did not do those last year. We did them the year before, so we went to four locations throughout the county. We invited a vendor, a representative from every vendor. So someone from APTA Care Coordination, APTA Cash, face the name, somebody from the clinic, somebody from the EAP program. We would have vendors available to answer questions, help with enrollment, anything from dental physician to.
If we're up here trying to get the most for them, they gotta be able to work with us too.
And I really think that we've given them all the tools and we try to reach out and, you know.
Didn't we have, didn't we have a Zoom call and that one single person?
That was messed up on the scheduling, they didn't know about it or anything. I don't know really what happened.
So when do you need a decision from us? The next 30 days, 60 days, 90 days?
30 days.
30 days?
Yeah, sooner the better.
Okay. Well, we'll have it on our agenda for our next meeting, we'll make a decision then. But in the meantime, let's regroup, reorganize and get this information that we need in front of us so we're, you know, satisfied with the decision we ultimately made, whether we do it or we don't do it.
Well, I think really our decision is that if we're going to do it for 2025 or if we're going to delay it, I think we need to have an absolute date when it's going to start so the employees.
Well, I, you know, I personally have my mind made up. We cannot, but the only thing that I'm not crystal clear on is, is there a way that we can make this more powerful to those that are having to come off of it? Look, we just can't, there's, there's no secret, we're cash drafted county government, we're cash drafted. We have to do, there's some big decisions that are going to have to be made here in the next 12 months or so. And if we're not, we're not doing what we need to do on our end as administrators, we can't go back, we can't go to the taxpayers and ask them, you know, to release, you know, more resources to us to manage. So, but I'm not making any secret to it. If you're paying attention, you're paying close attention, we have an issue here in county government. It's not just with our health, our health benefit. There's a big issue here. So, but we need to do what we need to do to lessen, you know, that burden as much as possible. So, you know, I, again, as Scott pointed out, this should be no surprise, you know, and it's disturbing to me that when I hear things like from Barb and Rhonda, that nobody's participating or nobody's reaching out for more information, that's disturbing to me. You know, they shouldn't be taking anything for granted. And I'm not suggesting that they are necessarily, I'm just saying that, look, this is cost taxpayers, they have a lot of money to offer this benefit. And it's not, you know, we're always going to offer health insurance, but there's health insurance and then there's health insurance. And we spend, you know, I've been up here, like Laura, I've been up here for many years now, and, and I've noticed here in the, in the last couple of years, we've worked this program, the last four, four years or so, really worked this program hard.
We meet every month and review data?
Yep, yep. And so I know that eyes are on it constantly and I, and historically, that hasn't not always been the case. And it's just, so I know we're, we're doing what we can do, it's just at a point, the employees have got to help carry some of that load. I mean, it's just, it is what it is.
Well, we do have some good news, and that's the one test selected. We just want to have the commissioners approve us adding this one. Yeah, we might talk about that real quick.
Just quickly, UMR, who's our third-party administrator, they are rolling out a new value-add program. It's scheduled to be added automatically retro back to August 1st unless you decline the program. But it's basically a fitness and wellbeing program, at no extra cost to the plan. It simply allows employees access to more digital fitness resources and also gym membership discounts. And so again, it's scheduled to be added to the plan automatically effective August 1st unless you choose to voluntarily opt out of the program.
Kathy giving us dirty looks back there. She's got to type all this up.
I know.
Not yet? We're good.
Well, I move that we add the one test select option to our.
We have a motion as second for approval. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gee, where am I now? Opiate committee, opioid committee.
Say that to each other.
I think I just did. Sam Burge, could you come up, please?
Thanks for letting me speak, everybody. I brought some printouts also. So this, the flyer on top here, this campaign actually ends at 11:00 PM. I think I probably will die a year earlier after all of this, but it's been really great. And then underneath that, it's just a little bit of info from stats and stuff about the program and what we're doing. program, what we're doing. Do you want me to stand up?
Yes.
So, first, I wanted to also say, I'm not here in the police social work capacity like I usually am. So, since 2017, I've been doing various reintreatment work throughout Northwest Indiana. And 2019 is when the Community Change Center became a nonprofit in the area. So, at this point, we do transitional living for men coming out of incarceration. We partner with Neo and Poor Issues, Mental Education, and Alcoy Unity Cafe. We serve about 80 people. Every Friday, we do a support group, open to anyone, followed by a free community dinner. So, we get a lot of individuals coming who are struggling with mental health, with post-infuse, with homelessness, all of the issues with them. We also pull in a lot of different people from various professional settings to kind of bridge these gaps, build connections between people that typically wouldn't come into positive contact with each other. And then we also, this year, started doing recurring employment affairs for low-income individuals who can't afford to have their records dispensed, they're still struggling to get employment, things like that, but just because they can't afford a turn. So, our latest initiative is coming out, a lot of our clients, especially those with higher level charges, struggle to get employment. So, for example, I had a client last week who, he thought he landed a really great job at Best Buy, and a week later, they came back and said, actually, we read your background and we can't do this. And they knew that you've been incarcerated. So, it's, a lot of people think that because of the tax credits and things, that employers are incentivized to hire individuals with backgrounds, but it's really, really difficult to get them hired, especially with higher level folks. So, the Community Change Center's latest initiative is our Fresh Start Food Truck. So, the concept is, we're training them, we're employing them transitionally. So, a lot of people, if, you know, they're released from incarceration, if they don't have a job quickly, then a lot of them unfortunately fall back into whatever led to their arrest in the first place, trying to survive with your family. So, what we've done, we really follow the Homeboy Industries model out of LA. We have nothing like it in Northwest Indiana, and so that's been my goal, is to create this community-based reintreatment center where people coming out can get wraparound services, not, okay, you've been released, we know you have no idea where to go, and somehow figure out, you know, how to get some community information, get connected with what you need. So, that's really what we have been building, is this community-based reintreatment center. Increasingly, we're seeing the need for the employment services. So, about three months ago, we partnered with IHDBA. They gave us the opportunity for match funds to launch this initiative. So, the campaign ends at 11:00 PM tonight, which is how this whole situation kind of came about with urgency. So, they're matching up to $30,000 of what we raised to launch this truck. So, it's going to slowly be run by our clients who have been incarcerated. The beauty of it is, yeah, we're employing them, but we're also providing the wraparound services. So, for a lot of people, they're released from jail or from prison, and they're still busy trying to survive. They can't afford to think about therapy, or, you know, recovery services or anything like that. But when we can alleviate that, as well as they know, hey, I go, I reach out to Community Change Center, they're gonna help me work, but also provide these services, it really increases the likelihood that they'll stay engaged in services, not risk them going back to incarceration. So, one of the other unique things about this project is that we're really trying to also focus on stigma reduction for the population, and building more positive relationships between those who have been in the system, and those of us working in the system. So, even since I've been doing this work, I've seen a big change, and a lot more. Now, we do so many community-based recovery events and things focusing on this, there's a lot more positive rapport already, but still work to be done in terms of getting those coming out to trust us, and to know, hey, even, even though you're not in the jail, you're not in prison anymore, we're still here to support you. So, this truck will be primarily serving to those working within the jail, close to the courthouse information office, so then we have the opportunity to continue those positive relationships. As a social worker, one of my favorite things is to show the clients, hey, you're out now, I'm still here for you, please reach out, whether you're struggling or whether you're doing well. So, this is a chance, both for the employment, but also to continue those relationships, and make sure those coming out know exactly where to go, and who's gonna help them when they're out. So, and I also just wanna say, so at this point, on our online platform, which cuts off tonight, we've raised $18,282, and then we just got a donation from NiSource for just shy of $30,000. So, then that money will be matched by IHDBA. The issue being, it's not really an issue, but it has to come from different funding sources, so IHDBA matches up to 35% of that $30,000, which means we're not matching, you know, $29,884 from NiSource, we're matching $10,500. So, anyway, we're in a really good spot to actually launch this. But when I spoke with the council, this was pushed through, which I appreciate, all the work that's been done for the opioid committee too, but that's kind of why this became urgent, because that match money only comes through until whatever's running for tonight. And then I will say too, one of the really cool things that's come from this, I keep saying regardless of the funding, which has been great also, but to have seen the community really rally around this. When we first rolled out the concept, because it really hasn't been done here before, people were a little nervous, a little bit of side eye, but over the past 60 days through this campaign, we've had so many people from all these different sectors reach out, people with food trucks, you know, all these different agencies said, hey, let us know how we can help you with this. And even, I have two clients, two and a half years ago, one was living in a tent, one was living in a retard, both horribly addicted, and now, every single Friday, they come to the Unity Cafe, and they help serve others in the community. And, sorry, and now they know too, like, this is my community, this is where I go to get the support that I need, and they're able to, you know, have their stories written, all these things taken care of that they couldn't address while they were in active addiction. And so, to see this really full circle, right, to see the clients who are struggling now actually helping push this forward, it's really incredible.
Sam, what's the total cost of the truck?
So, $16,000 was our goal with the match fund, that's enough to buy a solid truck outfit and do this and have it wrapped.
And will the, the people working in the truck, will they be paid?
Yes, definitely.
And where does that money come from?
That'll come from the profit. We've buffered in a little bit of money to, like, you know, account for the cost initially, and so we actually started generating profit. But then, it's a for-profit initiative under a nonprofit, which means, like, nobody's salaries are, you know, I don't know if it's due, and nobody's salaries, because salaries are going up, it's going to keep employing more people. And the goal is to start with one truck, and then continue to build that out, so we can have more and more, you know, keep building out the employment piece. So, what Homeboy in LA has done is they have all these different initiatives, so they started with a hot dog cart, and then they got another one, another one, and now they're in the airport, they're all over the city with screen, you know, they're doing electronic recycling, and screen printing, and food truck, and homegrown cafe, and all these different things that, then over time, they're able to provide the employment, get the clients engaged in case management as well, but then also, like, show employers, these are good people to hire, and it's really this workforce development initiative also.
Is there supervision in the truck when it's being operated?
Yeah, so what we've done, so what we do with our programs now is we have, like, kind of like a peer, like Carrie was talking about, somebody with a little experience who is trustworthy, we've worked with them for a long time, they know them, they have leadership abilities, but then we also train them up to be that supervisor. And then our end goal too, is to hire somebody specifically to be able to do case management, as well as oversee the truck, so that the workers on the truck already know, this is my person, this is who I ask for help when I'm struggling, but also this is to, like, make sure I'm doing my job.
Do you need a CDL to operate the truck?
Um, excellent question, actually. I've worked with a lot of different agencies to do it, but that is the question that I need to get answered.
Carrie, do you know the answer?
It would depend on how large you went, like, our local, you just require a...
Okay, perfect.
...a little larger.
Thanks. Yeah, so that's what, like, some of the things, like wrapping, for example, I've gone and gotten, you know, I try to get quotes for it, but until you have the actual truck, and it's dependent on how much money we raise, which truck we can buy, so...
And where are you gonna store this?
We've talked with a couple of different nonprofits who have been willing to host us to store it, as well as do the commissary kitchen, until we buy it, that's where we have an asset board to actually push it through, and, you know, give us the green light to do it, but there's a couple of places we want to host it.
They've also begun working with all departments. Just knowing what they would need to do, just to, like, she does that, we should for what they would...
So, there's a couple of reasons that I particularly like this project. One of the things, when I took a tour with Sheriff Brown, he has said that 80% of the people incarcerated are there for drug, you know, substance abuse. And one of the huge things in understanding the whole thing is, you have to provide something for these people when they get out, so that they don't reoffend. And I know that there's a huge cost to the community when they reoffend. You know, there's an emotional, family, and an actual financial cost when people reoffend. So, I love the idea that we're trying to keep them, give them a purpose for not going back to their old lives. The other thing I like is the fact that we're matching what you're raising, and then that's gonna get matched again. So, the money that we're providing on the opioid funds actually is gonna get matched a couple of times. So, I think this is a really, really good project.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you could tell how passionate you are, bless your heart. You know, my only issue, and it has nothing to do with your request here, is that, which I, you know, I can't figure out, I can't figure out some decisions made around here from time to time, is that these same type of funds were approached by the coroner's office, were in a van, and they were turned down, but they approved this. So, I, and it has, again, that's nothing to do with you, it's just, doesn't make any sense to me.
If I can, I have been asked that several times also, what you're talking about, and in the packet on the first page I mentioned, I looked up the stats of how many people who are incarcerated are, have been, you know, are struggling or have struggled with addiction, and or are incarcerated for a drug-related crime, which is like 85% for the National Institute of Health. And so, like, that's the correlation that I've been kind of explaining, is that some people have said, well, you're serving the reintimate population as a whole, but a majority of that population is the recovery population also that are trying to do it.
Well, what I like about this is that it's offering program to those who want to work. Because as you know, Sam, there are some that we could stand out here and offer jobs in this building with there. That's why I like this program, is that it's offering something to help them get back on their feet, to those who want it.
Right. And initially, I've been saying, we're, in the first truck, the first go-around of this, we're gonna hire the guys that we know are solid, and will, you know, are people, people, like, they're gonna serve the people coming to the truck well. Over time, as we grow, my hope is to be able to take in those who are a little bit rough around the edges, to actually train them, so then they can go and be hired by other employers, but initially, you know, we can't risk having a bad reputation because...
Yeah, it's just, you know, it's one of those things that, I don't know, it's, sometimes I think we're so quick, somebody makes a terrible decision, and then the rest of their life is defined by that. You know, I'm not talking about, you know, capital murder, I'm talking, you know, when it comes to drugs, and that's a shame, you know, because there's, you know, that is not always, that is not always the case.
I appreciate all the work you've done, I think it's outstanding, and I'd like to make a motion for $15,000 from the opioid funds to go towards, what do you call it? Fresh Start Food Truck fundraising.
I second.
We have a motion as second for approval. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
By the way, I just wanna mention, oh, thank you so much, Sam, really appreciate it. I just wanna mention, this was out of the opioid committee process only because of her deadline, and we wanted to make sure that she had the dollars by today, because we wanted her to be able to be eligible for the $30,000 maximum max.
Yeah, I caught that.
And so, and that leads into the opioid committee process, and a few months ago, we actually passed a resolution to establish the committee, and it's one commissioner, two council people, and two citizen appointments. And we also have someone from the auditor's department as a non-voting member on the committee. And I'm stepping back in to be the commissioner on the committee. I think we know who the two council people are, but they need to be officially nominated at their next meeting. And then today, we just need to make the citizen appointment, so...
Have we accepted applications for those?
Yeah, we did. And we just tabled that, and so we got, we knew what was gonna happen with the commissioners and the council, so...
I, you two talked about sitting there in one or the other, I mean, you're okay with that?
I'm not gonna be here next year when you guys are going through this process.
I really hope that Commissioner Blaney would, because she went through the whole ARCA process, and I thought she was really well-suited to do it, but we did get some information from the auditor on all the great work that you did, and I'm hoping that that will be a model for the process going forward. So, on the process, we will be figuring out what the application will look like, what the amount of money that will be granted, how we'll do that, what the scoring will be, and we hope to have that completed and approved through the commissioners and the council by the end of the year, such that we can open up the grant process in 2025. And the funds will go through the end of 2038, unless something happens and we get more money. So, that will be the...
So, you'll come back with a blueprint for this board and the council to approve?
Yes, yes. Yep. And so, I would like to now make Josie Harper as the first appointment to the committee.
Second.
We have a motion as second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
You have one question, sorry about that appointment, but I know it's been several months. Have we double-checked to make sure the nominees here are still interested?
Yes, yes. Okay. And then I would like to nominate Megan Wyszlinsky as our second appointment.
Second.
We have a motion as second for approval. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Anything else? All good?
Yeah.
All right. Skillman, projects update, Memorial Opera House, County Jail, and County Garage.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Gentlemen, would you be able to draw up those pictures?
So, we'll start with just a quick...
Okay, go ahead.
...by area of the Memorial Opera House project. Lot of progress coming together, and we're about on that final stretch for getting everything completed in all the public accessible places prior to the opening of the building here at the end of the month. I'll go through these, each of the areas, Scott, if you have anything to add as we go through these, feel free to do so. I'm gonna go through the, kind of the behind-the-scenes sort of items, the mechanical upgrades that we're doing in the basement, the air handler has been set, all the ducts have been finally connected, so all we're doing right now is completing all the water lines that connect to it, get it back operational. All of that will be connected and ready by the end of the month. The only thing that will not be completed by the end of the month is the chiller unit that sits on the outside in that little courtyard between jail and the opera house. That will come in early September, we'll set that, get the rest of that connected and terminated, and finish buttoning up that space between those buildings as well in September. Outside of that, the boiler room, we have all the equipment set, again, we're just connecting all the piping, getting all the nitty-gritty items completed by the end of the month, get the insulation done back there as well, get it all started up and back online. Making great progress. Starting upstairs in the bathrooms, we've been working on all our tile flooring, all the floors have been set, we are routing them currently, and then starting all the wall tile all the way around the perimeter of both bathrooms currently. We still have to paint the ceiling, we have all our fixtures, toilet partitions, accessories, all of that's available, ready to be installed as soon as that tile is done, and it's kind of secure and set in place. That, again, will be done about the end of the month, a little bit, right around that last week, I believe. The front lobby, first floor lobby, we have all the walls put back together, all the lights have been rusted and ready to put in all the final fixtures and appliances. We're getting ready to paint that, those rooms, starting next week. Our painter's on site working on some wood trim and other spaces, and this will be the last place that he goes to finish painting, after which our tile installer, once they're done with all the bathrooms, will move in and start working on all the floors, get that buttoned up, so that we can get the case work, the rest of the fixtures, all the appliances and everything set back in place by the end of this month. The last thing I have is the front entrance storefront, that'll be installed by the end of this week. We're a little concerned with some water possibly coming in, so we're gonna get that set in place, get it watertight, just to make sure we don't have any more issues with water coming in at front entrance, especially as we're getting started with that floor tile. We don't want to make it protected. Scott, do you have anything to add on the first floor lobby?
I think that it's gonna just give us a lot more opportunity, more better traffic flow. I think there's also some opportunities that we can be looking at to, you know, I know we've discussed for years, diversification and adding some more value as far as rentals go. Now, we can start looking at things like, if somebody's hosting a wedding at our venue, we can look at cocktail, how we can add into that package, that because there's more room for some greater traffic flow. So, it's exciting to see.
Next slide is the second floor, this is actually the next place that our painter is going, and everything's ready to get painted and finished out. The second floor bar is actually coming this week, we'll have it set in place after the painter's done painting those walls, we'll get that in place, we'll get the plumbing fixture that goes in the middle, the sink that goes in there, you can use the stub up and the floor, get that final connected, and look at getting the rest of that second floor buttoned up and ready for finishing that flooring on the second floor. Scott, anything to add?
Again, I think that it's going to enhance that space. Again, I think that it's just going to enhance that space, and I'm excited to see where this is going. So...
And then, last but not least, the auditorium and the stage, synonymous with each other. We're finishing the rest of our idol lighting down low. Carpet installer will start, middle of this week, they'll start on the second floor balcony, and then work their way down to the first floor, get everything underneath where the chairs are firmly carpeted. The chair installer is currently scheduled for the week of the nineteenth. They'll come in and start putting all the chairs in place, get that all buttoned up and ready to go for the end of the month. But most ideally, get all of the seats and parts and materials that are currently on the stage off the stage until that stretch and his team can start getting things prepared for his first show. Have that ready to go by early September.
And I'd ask Scott if he could come and just talk about this project from his perspective.
Sure.
And, go ahead.
Sure. Again, I think that this is something that we have to all look at as an investment, right, that you've made into quality of life for the community, for our county, for all of us that do work there. And it's, it's something that's very, very exciting to walk through and sort of reimagine how the space will be used, how it will affect our patrons, how it will affect donors, and how we can sort of greater leverage some of the things that we're doing to bring some money in, the revenue into the Opera House. It's all very, very, like you're saying, it's very exciting. It's, it's just building a new house, sort of the situation. And that's something that the staff is currently working on as well, as we're trying to figure out shuffling things about, is what do we want to sort of get rid of, what do we want to do better going forward, make some more efficiencies? So, this is really allowing for that. It's a great thing for all of us. Thank you.
That it?
Just to review a few milestone dates. Again, auditorium balcony, stage, main entrance lobby, all the mechanical systems in the basement, targeting the end of the month. That first week of September, we are targeting to do our final cleaning. And any other touch-up items, touch-up paint, anything that we need to do before opening. And then, right now, we have tentatively scheduled week of the ninth to do a dedication ceremony in the Opera House.
So, when?
A week of the ninth. We don't have a date...
Correct. I think we're waiting to...
Hundred percent yet, but the week of the ninth we will target for that.
Who decided that?
That's something that Scott and I have just discussed a lot. Nothing is set in stone.
Yeah, nothing. So, we had to figure out the timing when it was done versus before things start getting going there. So, and...
Yeah, the rest of the board needs to know that.
Right.
Be a shame if we were the lower half of the campaign.
No, 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 no. This is just to get it on your radar that we're gonna be coming forth by the day.
Okay. Go ahead.
And then, the only other two items, again, I mentioned the chiller, that'll be entered with September. We'll get that set in place, get all the mechanical systems tied back in, in line. And then landscaping, we're having that under contract this fall, but that work won't take place until this week. That's primarily that courtyard area, you know, after we're finished processing the mechanical... And then, just a quick budget summary, just to kind of go through everything currently on the project. The first line item was from the fall, masonry restoration of the original building, further destruction. That final number was two ninety-one five sixty-five. Exterior improvements currently under contract, that's currently under development.
Can you just talk about what the differences between what we've already done and what we're doing on the exterior?
So, the exterior...
Keep it, keep it certain. We've got a very long meeting.
Understand. So, back in the fall, we primarily focused on the masonry, the brick restoration, and making sure that we're keeping it watertight currently. And for the most part, we've accomplished that. We still have exterior doors that is in this contract that we had to replace and we are currently replacing, as well as replacing all the concrete steeps on the outside steps, railings, just better accessibility from the alleyway. Interior-wise, mechanical upgrades, everything we included in this current budget. We currently have an along flight on the floor landscaping. Again, once that's under contract, we will formalize that final amount. And whatever's remaining, we'll go back to that construction contingency, which is currently sitting at just under four.
Yeah, we'll do an overview. As these projects close out, we'll do an overview of what was done in more detail. I just don't, I don't wanna...
Sure.
...cumber an individual meeting with too much detail here.
And then, moving on, I just have five progress updates for contractors, starting with Garrett Construction Payoff Number One for a generous raising of the amount of two hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirteen cents.
You guys can do all the payoffs at once, but we just, if you choose to, we can do four through eight, I believe.
Okay.
Bart, why don't you read those?
Okay, well, should I just move right away and make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. So, I move that we approve the following payout. Garrett Construction Payoff Number One for general trade in the amount of two hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirteen cents. Circle R Mechanical Payoff Number Three for plumbing work in the amount of twenty-six thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. Mechanical Concepts Payoff Number Four for mechanical in the amount of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. MCOR Higher Electric Payoff Number Two for electrical work in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, seven sixty-seven forty-five. Midwest Talon Interiors Payoff Number Three for flooring in the amount of twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Second?
We have a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed same sign. Motion approved. Videotech, a quote to provide and install a general stream vault, one oh eight TV server in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, three dollars.
I move that we approve the quote with Videotech to install a Genetex stream vault, hundred and eight terabyte server, cameras, software, doors, for a total of seventy-eight thousand, three dollars. Second?
We have a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed same sign. Motion approved. Through the resolution for disposition property.
The pursuant to Indiana Code five twenty-two twenty-two eight, the commissioners through a resolution can determine that property either doesn't have value, or the cost of selling or otherwise disposing of the property is, costs more than the property itself. That is what we have here. We have a list of items that are attached to the resolution, or the exhibits outlining what is being disposed of. I'm pulling that up now. Basically, we're looking at things that are coming out of the Memorial Opera House that are no longer being used, or plan to be used, and also doesn't have any value. So, we have miscellaneous furniture items. We have some things like, you know, bar carts, side tables, bench. We have a concomity of issues that, as the building got cleaned out for the renovation, as people are looking at the future, these are the things that don't have any current value and aren't needed for the continuing operation of the Opera House moving forward. I have reviewed and produced a resolution. The Opera House provided not only a list of itemized, but also pictures that go along with the list. So, we have a very good idea of what we're dealing with. I think it's pretty clear that relative value is very, very low, and any attempt to get rid of it to potentially see any profit, I believe, would end up costing more in the process than we would be able to gain from it. So, ultimately, I produced a resolution, and I recommend this would be the process to allow the Opera House then to move forward with either giving it away or disposing of it appropriately.
Any, any thought about contacting the foundation, see if they want to take this property and to sell it to...
The Opera House Foundation?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've had that discussion, and they were like, they don't want to have anything to do with it, because it's just, it's set pieces, it's old lighting equipment, things like that. And they were like, they would rather we deal with it.
How are you gonna get rid of it?
We have some theaters and some individuals that are actually interested in it, because they can always use the set pieces and things like that. We just don't have the space to continue storing it. And as Attorney General said, as we look toward the future, I don't know that it's really necessary to fill spaces that up with just stuff.
And Scott, you said it would probably end up costing us more money to try to put that up for sale than we would actually make it in.
Yeah, that's ultimately what the resolution was finding, is that if we had a sale, or a Facebook, or garage sale, or whatever we would do, the cost between the employee time and the time that we would take to get it appropriately disposed of would outnumber what would be potentially gained from the actual sale.
Kind of like the grinding of the highway.
I move that we approve the resolution for disposition of property at the Memorial Opera House. Second?
We have a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed same sign. Motion approved. Okay. Approval of the Memorial Opera House Foundation proposal to renovate the cast restroom.
This restroom is not a part of the renovation, is completely being run separately by the foundation. And we just want to have a formal approval of the design, since it's still our building. And I move that we approve the Memorial Opera House Foundation proposal to renovate the cast restroom. Second?
A motion in a second for approval. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed same sign. Motion approved. NIPSCO estimate in the amount of two thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-five cents to relocate gas service.
I move that we approve the NIPSCO estimate to pay for, to relocate gas service in the approximate amount of two thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second?
We have a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed same sign. Motion approved. Highway Department, project update.
Yes, just some quick updates here for the Highway Department. Contracts have been received, signed by the contractors that we were awarded to. Permit, construction permit will be ready for pickup tomorrow. Submittals are ongoing from all the contractors. We've seen a lot come in these past two weeks, especially long lead time items. So, we're concentrating on those. And we hope to be mobilizing here in the next week or two and get things underway. Did update some milestones here. We'll kind of hit those as we get further along in the project. But the next milestone coming up is our presentation for commissioners' meeting and the council, which is...
The rest are self-explanatory.
Yes.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Jail, project update?
Jail, same thing there. Signed contract. We got the approval for the standing seam roof sample. So, that material's been released. Hopefully, that material will be on site here in roughly three weeks. So, as soon as we know that material's getting shipped out, that's when we'll start moving the metal panels and begin that construction. So, we're hoping here by the end of August to get started to kick off. Parelus is gonna be mobilizing here in the next two weeks as well. Submittal's ongoing and just working through the front end stuff. Everything seems to be moving in the right direction. Substantial completion goal here is roughly July first, and we will be presenting this at the commissioners' meeting and council on August twenty-seventh.
Videotech, a quote to provide and install card access and CCTV in the amount of thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars.
That's the Health Department, Madam?
Why is it on the...? Oh, I'm sorry. It jumped down.
That's all that they have.
Is that it?
That's it. That's all I...
Thank you.
Lost the place.
It's like, oh, good, they're gonna take care of it now. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Just a quick update on the Health Department. The contractor has begun the demo at the old voters' location downstairs. You'll probably see them coming in and out. They've all got badges, so that way they can be identified as workers. So, they will begin work probably about six in the morning. It's under their schedule. They'll be done by two-thirty usually. So, most of the heavy noise and stuff like that will be taken care of before our staff gets on site. So, they've begun the demo, and they will begin construction here very shortly. We look to have that completed here sometime right after election. And then, right after that, we hope to get into Phase Two, which is the Health Department. We look to get that completed by end of December for Phase Two. I'm sorry, the beginning of December, but we're trying to move that up a little bit if we can.
We're trying to get that up if we can.
Just to kind of move the schedule along and save them on the mobilization costs as well.
Well, the other thing, too, is Phase Two is a lot more complicated, and they really, we're hoping to get like three extra weeks of playbooks. So, we're gonna try, and even Carrie has said, you know, whatever she can do to allow them to get started sooner.
Carrie's ready to move right now, I don't think, right?
We're, we're mobilizing.
Yeah. That's good. So, target date for that is December, but, you know, we're looking, we may move that up, which then would make move Phase Three up and then the completion date up. So, we'll keep you updated on the dates, just so you know for that. We are asking that the commission approve the Videotech quote. This is for the card readers and video monitoring for the Health Department, in a total of thirty-six thousand, four ninety-four.
Are we, are we pricing this out?
It was priced out. So, we did have this as part of the original, all across of the project.
And I move that we approve the Videotech quote to provide and install card access and CCTV in the amount of thirty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars. Second?
And a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. David, David Lee. Karen Martin's office. Peterson Consulting Services is in agreement to assist...
We've had you again. I'm not a...
What did we miss?
The Mary Ann Williams.
Porter County Disaster Declaration.
I move that we approve the Porter County Disaster Emergency Declaration. Second?
Discussion. Somebody want to explain what this is?
This was for the damage of the property during, yeah, during the storm.
Yeah, my, my understanding is this, this will allow, we're applying for federal funds. So, local residents who sustain, and businesses that may have sustained damages through this last storm that we've had, big storms, will have a conduit to apply for those, those funds that are available.
And this wasn't the storm the other night, it's just a week or two ago, right?
Right. That's when all those, actually, it was just before our last commissioners' meeting, because people had a hard time getting here, because all those huge trees were down north of downtown.
Okay.
My motion stands.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed same sign. Motion approved. Peterson Consulting Services, an agreement to assist Porter County preparing the annual update of its capital assets, information for financial reporting for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. American motion?
Do we know what the dollar means?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not approving this without a dollar.
Eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Motion to approve. Second?
There's a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed same sign. Motion approved. Animal shelter, Jen? Jen? I, I'll just butcher that last name.
Everybody knows the two A's.
Tell it to me one more time.
Shasma.
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 Shasma. It's the two A's before the...
The two A's is throwing me off.
It throws them way off.
Okay. We have an amendment to, to the request to increase fees, to also raise adoption fees effective January first, twenty-twenty-five. One hundred dollar fee for dogs raised to one twenty, one hundred and twenty dollars, and fifty dollar adoption fee for cats raised to sixty. Would you explain as, as shortly as possible why you need that increase?
Um, just to try to kind of buffer the inflation of cost caring for the animals. Everything has gone up, so our medical budget is something, as far as it wants to be. And we're seeing that year after year. We're also getting a lot more stray animal intake this year compared to the past years. And it hasn't been increased in, I think, roughly seven years.
And our rates are still significantly less than others.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Motion to approve. Second?
The motion is second for approval. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed same sign. Motion approved. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're doing a good job over there, by the way.
Thank you.
Highway Department, Mr. Flarick, Porter County Highway staging agreement with Brad Metzger.
Good morning.
Still running?
Getting better, good, getting better.
Do we have that agreement in front of us somewhere?
Yes.
Mr. Flarick?
This is just the, this is the signed agreement for the staging, this particular with Brad Metzger. So we approved the form last time for Highway to be able to use it moving forward, and then Mr. Flarick was able to get this executed by the prosecutor and Mr. Metzger, and that is before us.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second for approval. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Development and stormwater management, Mr. Javoe.
Good morning.
Hi.
Amanda, access out some items over. Letter agreement from D O G Indiana, the amount of $9,250. This is due to space needs and up to three conceptual designs, space in their office.
Uh, what do you want? Oh, sorry. I don't think Barb signed, or Barb just signed it? Commissioner Blaney asked a great question.
What's that?
When we were talking about this, where's somebody going to come from the Texas to renovate it?
Now, I'd like to see how much it's going to cost first, but to do the study, we're going to pay a bit with our own funds, so the hell that'd be for on the general fund or any other funds. We would use three different accounts. We have funds in to pay for that. That's already settled.
I can't hear anything.
I'm sorry?
Can't hear you.
How's this?
Much better, thanks.
Yes, please speak up. All right. We'll need a motion. Some type.
I move that we approve the professional architecture engineering services for space planning with D O G for the development and stormwater management. Did you get quotes for this?
Professional services. And they did the original layout of the office, so they already got a head start because they already had the floor planned.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Then the next four items, I will turn it over to Amanda in a minute. I know she's appeared before you, before, giving you kind of a taste of what's coming as far as our changes. Most of these changes, the first one and item two has to do with our unified development ordinance, or U D O. The other items have to do with our change of our standards, and then a couple amendments that make reference from the U D O. This all has to do with stormwater management, the requirements that were imposed upon us by organizations such as U B A, Environmental Management. So without that, I will turn over Amanda, and she will make the presentation. And I suppose this is a first reading situation, so we'll take any questions you have in a public, any public input.
Go ahead.
So I'm Amanda Van Over, and I'm the four program coordinator for Porter County. The program is administered by I D M, the Indiana Department of Environmental Management, and complies with the EPA and T V S permit requirements on water quality. For those of you who see this in the audience, M S four stands for municipal separate storm sewer system. Stormwater is considered a polluted discharge from the municipal areas that must be regulated. This program became effective in 1999 and applies to any entity responsible for an M S four conveyance regardless of population size. M P M says have six minimum control measures to build the program and report annually to I D M on the progress of compliance of these requirements. I D M issued two new permits in 2021 for the M S four construction requirement, so the M S four general permit regulates us, and then the construction stormwater general permit regulates any development project that's going to disturb one acre or more of land area. Some of these provisions were chosen to improve the language consistency of U D O and construction standards. The revisions address the missing pieces of our program to comply. The reason why that's important is that our program is already very extensive. We've done a very good job of organizing what we need, making our guidance documents, making our design documents. So really what we had to do to comply with I D M was minimal. So for chapters in the U D O, 5.14, this was from, the entire U D O is from 2007, so anything that we're adding from that is based on what has been implemented since then. So 514 is environmental ordinances. This is an appropriate section for the additional requirements that we had to add. Having these, help our department force when necessary, that's really, all of this has to do with enforcement when it comes to construction sites and development. So in our environmental standards, we are adding waste disposals. There was already some definition on waste, but this goes to more depth on what is, what is required and what is expected of construction sites and how they manage their waste. Proper storage and handling of materials, so chemicals, how are those being stored? Are they going to spill? What is the cleanup procedure? De-watering operation, which has to do with sediment in waterways. I'll have a little bit here on sediment. So sediment is considered a polluted discharge. We do not want that in our waterways. It creates many problems, some of which are clogging fish gills, covering eggs, destroying the clarity of water in aquatic habitats, and it also adds to scouring and bank erosion. So there are multiple reasons why we wouldn't want this in our waterways. So when you have a de-watering operation, I'll have some pictures of what that looks like later. We're just trying to make sure that the sediment before the water is discharged is filtered out. Concrete and cement kitchen washout areas, this is a requirement that we've enforced already, so we have it headed in our ordinances or in our standards. So this is when a construction site has concrete being poured, we are making standards to make sure that they are doing what is required according to the state and federal level. Fertilizer application, we didn't have any details on this before, so this is more focused on not what fertilizer you can use, but when you should fertilize, so don't fertilize before a rain event or during a rain event, because then all of that fertilizer just goes to our waterways. So it's kind of a best management practice to ensure that the least water pollution occurs because the. Floculents and polymers, these are additives in water. So when you go to a construction site and you see a detention basin and it's cloudy, that's like where all the water is running off on the construction site, before it discharges, the de-watering operation is really for small areas. So if you're dealing with a large detention basin, you can kind of see the background of this image. If you put a flocculent in that water, it binds to the sediment and drops to the bottom of the pond, so that when the water discharges, it's as clear as it's going to be. Restoration and cleanup, we have had some issues in the past with restoration or cleanup from construction sites or just sites in general, but we didn't have any way to enforce that either. And so this is calling that out, is creating a phrase in the U D O for us to point to and show that these are requirements for if there's a methane or any destruction downstream, this will call that out and require it. And with new retail gasoline and replacement tanks, this is an effort to reduce the amount of pollutants that come from gas stations. So when you have rain come down onto the tar surface or concrete surface where people are filling their gas tanks, you could imagine all of those hydrocarbons just pick up into the water and then go off the site. So we're asking new developments or replacement tanks, how are you going to try to reduce the amount of hydrocarbons and pollutants going into our waterways from your site? Chapter 715 is the one I, the chapter that I have the most experience with, is on erosion control standards. So there's a few elements here that should be discussed, mostly for enforcement and the minimum expectations when complaints are received or like instructions being conducted. So for the I D M construction permit, that one is a requirement that wasn't listed in the U D O before, so now that's been added so that anybody reading that section can understand how to comply, understands that's part of this process. Erosion sediment control plan update, there is some phrasing saying that we allow sketch plans to be submitted specifically for general construction. That is not true. I don't think we've ever had. I had talked to the building commissioner about this and made sure that he was on board that we do not accept sketch plans. They need to be engineered, and they need to have plenty of data that can't be just hand-sketched and documented properly. So the word sketch has been removed from multiple sections here, and I'll call those out. Finally, in this section, we have concrete washout, so that was still from the environmental section, pulled into this one saying this needs to be on your site plan. This is pretty standard practice. A lot of engineering firms do add these to their site plans, but it's not listed in our U D O. So now it is part of our U D O, we can enforce it, and everyone understands our expectations. For chapter 728, stormwater standards, that kind of coincides with any development project as well as our stormwater design annual. So nothing crucial being changed there. Really what's all being changed is this word sketch, and they like listed sketch inside of the drainage plan, which is not what we accept. So that is now being removed, and that's the only change in that section. In chapter eight, this was just a list, if you, our Carrie can see it, I can have a copy. It was just a list of what is supposed to be in our construction standards. Our supplemental design and construction standards are a separate document altogether. This is a reference to the different sections, and they were not correct. None of them actually aligned with what our construction standard said. So the updated page is just making it so that it matches what our construction standards say. Simple as that. For chapter 1015, erosion control permit, that's been different from the standards. We also removed the sketch word from that section, so the word sketch has been removed from anything that has to do with development. And then permit posted on site for the duration of the project. Originally, the section just said to have it when you're on site, but that's not true. The permit, when it's issued and you are working on a construction site, must be posted for everyone to be able to see and read for the duration of land drainage. We are also changing the construction standards in a few small ways. These specifically were things that were in the new construction stormwater general permit. The sediment control for sediment basin is kind of hand-in-hand with the polymers that I talked about earlier. It's making sure that we're pulling from the surface of the water column. As water comes through through your construction site and it drains, the point is these sediment basins, there's sediment ponds, so those sediment particles should settle out before being discharged into our public waterway system. So this is outlining what we expect for clarity. If you can't pull from that very top surface, say in the winter when it's frozen, we'll work with you to see what can be done or what other engineering methods have been available on the commercial market to try to meet these standards. But this is from the state, this is from the EPA, these are standards that they are expecting everyone to comply with. Topsoil dripping and stoppiling, we had some language on this in our construction standards, but it wasn't explicit. The idea here is that when top, when a construction site is active, the developer typically will take all the topsoil off of the surface of the site and stoppile it for safety base, so that at the end of development, they put the topsoil back on, and then they can have a nice grass, because grass doesn't grow very well on non-topsoil type soils. So just some information and writing on what that is required, making sure that they do stoppile and that they replace it in the respectful manner. The downspout and sub discharge, this is not one of the new construction requirements from the state. This was out of effort to reduce the amount of drainage concerns that we get from our residents. It's a very common complaint where there may be somebody neighbor unknowingly discharges their subpumps or some other, yeah, like the downspout from their house onto the property. That can cause scouring or yard con, multiple issues that cause frustrations for homeowners. So this is a requirement to move that downspout or whatever pipe discharge ten feet away from the property line. That way, there's no, there's no dispute there. Everybody's doing the best that they can out of their respect to their neighbors. Inspection requirements to include S F G P. The section here, due to the list, is previous permit. I D M has renamed the permit as 2021, so it's just replacing that phrase. The new construction details are covering two of the things I've already mentioned. This is a de-watering system, so it usually has a pump, a pipe, and then you have a hose. This is the de-watering system that uses a very fine filter pad, so it pressurizes. The one on the left is literally just moving the water out of where it's standing and then pumping it eventually through a de-watering bag, but you can't see on the picture. The idea is they shouldn't be discharging directly to the street. Like this, they need to be discharging out of something like this that dissipates and reduces the amount of sediment so that we don't have more scouring or more sediment going into the waterway. The concrete washout system has multiple ways that it can look, but what we're looking for is not using in-ground systems, meaning we're not, we're not allowing people to dig into the ground, put a tarp in, and then discharge concrete wash. There's a lot of risks with that. One of them being if that tarp is damaged, all of that concrete washout material, it is typically, I believe, a pH of 12. That's incredibly caustic, and it's going to cause a lot of problems for people drinking water or anything living in the water downstream. So the idea is just best management practice above the ground, we're not using straw bales, something that structurally will not move if accidentally hit by construction equipment or. And this is, this is specifically based on what I see when I go look at construction sites and the frustrations that are pretty typical for any construction inspector. Other ordinance revisions, one is 1305, and this is just an update of phone number. The ordinance, according to what the state requires at this point, is up to speed. We don't really have to change it to comply with any new permit requirements, but to update the phone number, it was somebody in the office specifically, and we would rather go through the entire mainline so that if it had something to do with anybody in particular, there are more ears, I think, there rather than it being somebody who may not be working here anymore. And then flood damage prevention, there is missing garbage specifically. It was for non-residential structures. When you have building in the flood plain, if you get a permit to do so, you can use clean fill to place into the ground to build up that structure. That phrase was not in there. It's based on the D N R model ordinance that came out in 2022, so it's just copy paste you from the D N R model ordinance to make sure that what it reads is what it should be reading. So nothing is really changing, we just realized that need. Do you have any questions?
I don't. All right, well, this is a first reading, so we're going to have to close the commissioners' meeting and open up to a public meeting, and we'll start with requesting, is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of this order?
No, we're doing them all, doing them all together.
You're going to do them all together?
Yep. We presented them all together.
Okay.
Okay. So clearly, we are in first reading for the ordinance regarding revisions to the U D O chapters five, seven, eight, and 10 related to stormwater management, and ordinance amending construction standards related to stormwater management, and ordinance amending 1305 illicit discharge of stormwater connections, first reading, and ordinance amending 22-14 flood drainage prevention, first reading. It was presented all together, and it's also all coming from the same, the same impetus for the amendment is consistent throughout. We're all getting into compliance with our new stormwater permit. So it's, again, I think it's okay to be in one public meeting because it's all related issues.
Okay, well, that's good news. We have to do these separately. Okay, I'll start this over again. We're going to close the commissioners' meeting, open to a public meeting. I will ask three times, give three opportunities. The commissioners will to come up and support this ordinance, and three opportunities for someone to speak about why they won't, they do not support this ordinance. So I'll start with. So I'll start with, anyone might come forward and speak in favor of this ordinance or ordinances? Anyone like to come in front of the commissioners and speak in favor of this ordinance? Or ordinances? Last and final call, anyone like to come in front of the commissioners to speak in favor of these ordinances? Seeing none, does anybody like to come forward to speak as opposed to this or, these ordinances? Second call, is anybody, would anybody like to come before the board of commissioners to speak in opposition of these ordinances? Third and final call, is there anyone who would like to come in front of the board of commissioners, Porter County Board of Commissioners, to speak in opposition of these ordinances? Seeing none, I will close the public meeting, open back up to the commissioners' meeting, and entertain a motion. Before commissioners, just for the record?
Yes, sir. It's in your packet, but for the record publicly, this same presentation was made to the plan commission. The plan commission, as far as the U D O changes, did vote unanimously for a favorable recommendation to.
Thanks, Mike. American motion.
I move that we approve the changes to the ordinances regarding the stormwater and
Let me just rip those off, Barbara.
Do you want me to read them?
Is it, is it, is your motion to approve the ordinances on the agenda under Development Stormwater Management two through five?
Yes.
So move. Yes.
Second.
There are a motion and a second for approval, first, of the first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Abel, Valvoline Events. Sitting back there very patiently, what do you want? How are you?
Good.
You know, if you were nicer to Kat, you might get pushed up on the agenda as you were. Evidently, you upset her.
I think we got this for a park.
We have a, we have a, we have a request pertaining to the popcorn fest to use the parking lot behind one fifty-seventh Franklin Building for handicap parking.
We've done this the past few years. We do have a sheriff monitoring the lot, and they leave space for addicts perking for the nine-one-one dispatchers to come and go throughout the day.
So we're, we're, everybody's clear, nine-one-one's clear, what you need, and you're clear what they need?
Yes.
So everybody should be happy, right?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion as second for approval. All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Valvoline Parks, your request for a road closure on Clifford Road between the entrance of Creekside Golf Course and the entrance to Trail Yacht Restaurant between nine P M and twelve A M on Saturday, August seventeenth, to host the twenty twenty-four night ride as part of the Valvoline Bike Fest weekend. The map is included, didn't get the map. The sheriff has been notified as he approved. So this is happening from nine to midnight?
Yes. So our annual night ride?
That's hard, that's hardcore.
It is.
That's hardcore.
It used to run at ten. We actually moved it an hour earlier.
And how long is the ride?
It's a ten mile ride.
I've done it, you haven't?
No, I haven't. Did you do it?
Yeah, twice.
I thought Barbara was going to tell me she's done it too, I was like, damn it, now I got to do it. But that sounds fun, actually. And then after the ride, you have refreshments and?
Well, we'll have pot dogs and chips and.
They gather posse to go look for those who didn't return.
We're just requesting that that little stretch of road be closed for safety reasons so that we can keep all of the people arriving, and then at the end of the ride, leaving back to their vehicles based on that.
There's probably that time of night, there's probably not a whole lot of traffic going there.
We're not expecting the restaurant closes at ten P M. We don't expect anyone to still be at the restaurant when the ride ends. But some of the participants do parking at Trail Yacht Restaurant, with many of them parking at the call quarters.
Sounds fun.
Motion to approve. Second.
Yeah, motion is second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Thank you. Any other matter which may properly come before the Porter County Board of Commissioners?